All right, we'll call this meeting to order. This is an open meeting of the Hickman, Nebraska governing body. The City of Hickman abides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is on display in this meeting room as required by Nebraska state law. Notice of meeting and copies of this agenda have been publicly posted prior to the meeting. At the Hickman City Hall, Hickman US Post Office, Ustop Market, and City of Hickman website. There is a participant sign in sheet available and disclosure of meeting recording process notice posted. All individuals requesting to be registered agenda speakers must fill out a registered speaker card and submit to the recording clerk. The mayor or presiding meeting officer reserves the right to deny this request or will call you to the podium when your agenda item is ready to be heard. Presentations, if allowed, may be limited to five minutes per person. Please come to the podium, clearly state your name, address for the record, and the agenda topic you wish to speak upon in a professional manner. Public hearing testimonies may be limited to five minutes per person. All individuals requesting to hand out documents to the city council members must deliver them directly to city clerk for distribution. The city council may vote to go into executive closed session on any agenda item as allowed by Nebraska state law. The governing body may be excused and reenter the city council meeting room at any time after reconvening open session. If everyone is standing for pleasantries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, if you call roll, please.
Mayor of Hickman.
Here.
Noren.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Zeeman.
Here.
Gahoda.
Here.
Colwick.
Here.
Orker.
Here.
All right, mayor of communications, I have none. So with that, we will go to the consent agenda. First approval of September ninth, two thousand twenty-five city council meeting minutes. They were in your packet. Read and read and go over. Any corrections? Questions? If not, we will go to the approval of the September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five city council special meeting minutes. Comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, we will go to the claims and counts payable report.
Okay, so we have a pretty significant claims report. This is our last claims report of our fiscal year. So there are a lot of bills to pay out. Again, the yellow highlights are ones that have changed. Before from Friday when it was initially posted, so there were some updates there. On all roads barricades, those signs, they're roundabout signs, dead end signs, street name signs, pedestrian crossing signage, and also brackets to go with those. Just to let you know what's all in there. Scrolling down here, you'll see several invoices for payment to Elliott Concrete and Construction for multiple trail replacements and repairs. And then also Gana Trucking, a lot of those coincide with that because we needed some more backfill after they had replaced those trails. And that was not in Elliott's quote for service, so that that's on the city. And then there's another one to Gana for thirty thousand dollars, and that was to load haul and dispose of our dirt and compost in the brush pile area. If any of you have been back there, you would see a significant area has been cleared for that amount of money. We were running out of space back there, and I do believe this is the first time that we have cleaned that out and had some of that compost and dirt removed from the brush pile. Scrolling down a little bit, M E A N, mean, that's one of our affiliates that we belong to. There was a job safety and training course that your public works director took on some electrical items. And going down there, there's some other equipment things for, those are snow blades that we had bought for the new Chevy and also for the Kubota three-point mount. They have yet to be installed, but they ordered them and the purchase order and everything has been issued. We have our first TerraCon consultants for the Terrace View Geotech Services, that was for the four sampling. Terrace View Park. And then we have some supplies there. This Wells Fargo miscellaneous tools, we kind of lumped them all into one. Because we have a newer truck, we want to have tools on that truck as well. And your public works department hasn't bought new tools for multiple years. I can't even remember the last time they bought a large supply of tools. And we did have the monies in the budget this year, so with those tools, they have purchased high-performance pruners for when they're tree trimming, street trees. A lot of drill sets and impact drill bits. There's bench vice, multipurpose, indoor push brooms, pruning saws, a drill press with the table, extra batteries for the new drills they purchased, driver sets, earmuffs for safety. A five-speed floor radial drill press, lots of screwdriver sets. These will all be inventoried, labeled, of course, that sort of thing. So those have all been purchased on the city Visa card, I'm sorry, it's a MasterCard now, so the city's charge card. So a lot of tools, but like I said, they have not bought new drills and tools for some, quite some time, so. Necessary items there. I'll take any questions you might have on any of the bills.
On the Midwest mechanical industrial services, that was not water tower, that was treatment plant, correct?
Yes.
That was the emergency repairs on the water treatment plant. Sorry, I made those corrections in one location, I must have missed it there, I apologize.
Might want to take tower out of there.
Yes, we will definitely edit that. No, it says mid, no, I got it, look on my screen, we got it updated.
Okay, I.
Emergency water treatment plant repair here, sorry, we did some updates after I threw everything, I apologize.
Perfect, and that's a new cause.
And that is an insurance claim, we turned that into insurance, so they rescind the bill, but insurance will just send a check to the city if they decide to cover that.
What was the, in Wells Fargo Flight? Was that three oh eight, three oh eight thirty-seven?
I believe those are partial trip charges for four of your employees to go to Salt Lake City, Utah for software training.
Okay, what's the?
Is it Tampa, is that just where it's ran through, where it says Tampa, Florida?
That's your?
Oh, that's my I C M A ticket, sorry, sir.
Any other questions for Kelly? All right, entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Ms. Zeeman, second by Mr. Wagner, to approve the consent agenda, any other discussion? Michelle, if you call roll, please.
Noren.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeeman.
Yes.
Gahoda.
Yes.
Colwick.
Yes.
Orker.
Yes.
All right, moving on, proclamations, presentations, appointments, affirmations, introductions, we have none. So we will move down to reports, public works, and parks and recreation park.
Okay, as always, A one-one locate tickets and mowing. Our water and wastewater, we have installed meters for new construction permits, routine sampling, meter reading. At the wastewater plant, Newverth Construction, they've straightened everything up with the torque tube and the ladder, or the steps going up, everything is good to go. We still have yet to paint the gouges, and then they want to reset the scraper on the bottom floor that moves the sludge around. And then they need to repair a shear pin that broke as it, because it tilted. We're moving forward with the coordination of the construction of backup generators at the wells. I did get confirmation that well three could possibly see something happening in the next week or two. So the stuff's coming in pretty good for that. Repair on the gate out the wastewater plant, the far west one was basically rested in two, kind of fell apart. On the streets, fixed five street lights were repaired, and the concrete was replaced at Prairie View Park as well as the path from Autumn West, Autumn Road West towards the fire station. Fixed some street signs that had been hit by some traffic around the roundabout. Installed the red diamond signs at the end of Cypress Boulevard and West Fifth Street. Installed the crosswalk signals by the fire station, and we filled some potholes. Park side, trimming trees on the trail, they've been using that stump grinder quite a bit, and Gana did clean up the dump areas, Kelly said. Set up the fields for East Soccer, and we had a pre-construction meeting with K two for the construction of Scotts Creek Trail.
All right, any questions for Wade?
Did we know, and this might have been one of the weeks I was gone, the repairs on the wastewater treatment plant, was that all done, or what was the timing on that?
That, that was what I was talking about, the, so they've got it straightened up.
Yeah.
So they want, they were, there's some other places, once we drained it, there were some other places we noticed there was some rust, other than those gouges that were up there. So they're just calling in the painting, the company that did the painting for it, and they're going to do some warranty work as far as touching that paint up, so. Kind of the rain has kind of messed that up, so they were planning to come yesterday and today, but it rained, so coming soon, and then it should be up and going.
Okay, so all that additional work will be covered under that.
Yes, yeah, that's all part of it, yeah.
And then it might be interesting to look at, because I think we talked about last time of the street signs having the contractor put in at the new Scots Creek, Scots Creek Trail crossing. But with that being closer to the roundabout, I wonder if we should flip the flashing signs to be closer to where it's most dangerous. You know, as people are exiting the roundabout, you've got, right now, it would be slated to have non-flashing signs, and the flashing signs would be after that.
Because I.
Does that make sense what I'm saying?
We do have an extra set of those pedestrian crossings that flash that we have not poured to bases yet, so if, if we want to entertain.
Be interesting to look at that, yeah.
The best place to put that, yeah, because I bought it in the intention of wherever that crossing was.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Wade. Seven B, city code violations, abatements, nuisances, and improvements.
So a report has been prepared for you this evening. Some weeds taller than ten inches on Woodland Boulevard are in process of being completed. East Second Street, that's been taken care of. We also have some mowing on Larkspur Drive that needs to be done, and then signs in the right away from business owners, they've been contacted to remove it. And then the other ones in process down at the bottom there from October one, again, mowing, it's always ongoing, and then there's an unlicensed truck on Larkspur that we've had a complaint on, so that our deputy is to contract the truck owner.
And the building permits are ten more than much. Any questions for Kelly? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the reports.
Second. Motion was made by Mr. Noren, second by Mr. Wagner, to approve the reports as presented. Any other discussion? Michelle, call roll, please.
Noren.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeeman.
Yes.
Gahoda.
Yes.
Colwick.
Yes.
Orker.
Yes.
All right, public hearings, we have nuns. Number nine and finished business. Nine A ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash eleven, adoption of the city budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, and to provide for an effective date. And this will be the third reading. We have any questions for Kelly? It's been passed two previous times. If there's no other discussion, I'd entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash eleven on the third and final reading.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mr. Wagner, second by Ms. Zeeman, to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash eleven on third and final reading, any more discussion? Michelle, if you call roll, please.
Noren.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeeman.
Yes.
Gahoda.
No.
Colwick.
Yes.
Orker.
No.
All right, I just want to say thank you guys for going through the budget process. Especially thank you to Kelly. Big task. Item ten, new business, approval of Terrace View Park recreational pickleball courts, ninety percent design and bid specifications. And we have Eric from J E O, two percent, so we'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, everyone. The, I submitted ninety percent plans to Kelly last week. Kelly's asked me to kind of go through here tonight with you, just give you a quick overview of the bidding process and then answer any questions you guys might have. I'm passing around kind of a quick, like, kind of summary, just to walk you through what we're going to do with the bidding for the project and how that all evolves, and then kind of answer any questions you might have. Right now, we're on step one, procurement and preparation, so us being the architect engineer of the project, we prepared the plan specifications that are on the screen here tonight. The spec book's fairly large, we don't need to go through it in detail, I did pull out a few of the pages in the spec book for us, too, that are really kind of what we need to talk about this evening. Your role obviously would be to authorize the project to go out to bid, to receive bids for, from contractors this evening. And so that kind of kicks off task number two, which would be the public advertising, where we would, on Thursday, the plan is to advertise the project for three weeks. Contractors are allowed to get the project, look through the plans, both here at City Hall and on our E-Bid website that we have at J E O. Go through them, they'll be advertised locally in the newspaper as well, Kelly will advertise that. So then that ensures that we have transparency, that the project is out for public bid, anybody has, anybody interested in the project, we will also personally reach out to contractors to let them know that the project is bidding. They're also on our E-distribution list of projects that get sent out to everybody as well, so they'll get notified. So we'll take, we'll, we'll bid the project for three weeks, and then on step three, the bids are due at two P M on October sixteenth in this room. So the city clerk will take the bids, we will not open them until two P M, any bids that are received after two P M, we will not open those, we will set those to the sides, those do not qualify. And then we will unseal the bids, read them aloud, then document the bid amounts on the bid form. In the back of your packet is a copy of the bid form that they will fill out, it's on page two, I can go through that here, just kind of show you what the bid form looks like, it's also in the spec book here, we can scroll down a little bit. But they will fill out this bid form, the project is a total, it's not a, it's not a unit price project where we would list out every single unit price. This is a lump sum bid for, for the construction of it with some alternates, to see what pricing we would get for those alternates. The alternates would be added to the project if you chose, if, if the project came in under budget. Right now, we're anticipating around that six hundred and fifty thousand dollar lump sum based bid for the project. The alternates themselves would add to the project as well, all these are add alternates for the north sidewalk, a tennis court. We did go ahead and add some landscape trees, I know Kelly, you talked about maybe hiring a local landscaper, but we thought maybe let's get a price for it just to see what it is. It doesn't hurt to, to do that. To lighten up, some of the other alternates include the tennis court lighting, pickleball court lighting, and playground lighting as well. And then underneath the alternates, so they would fill out those sections, we have a unit price section where we're asking them to give us a unit price for concrete. Should we want to add additional sidewalk or parking along the street, we can utilize the unit price, prices that they submitted for their bid to add that work to the project through a change order. So if this project came in at six hundred thousand, you have an extra fifty thousand left over at the end of the project, you say, hey, let's go ahead and pave more parking, we can utilize that unit price to change order that work back into the project. So it, it, it allows us to kind of get bid prices upfront, so that we're not playing games with, you know, different, different prices towards the end of the project. And then we also included a on one oh seven contract time, so we left this one in there to allow them to write in when they would want to, when they're, they would have the work completed, so that allows us to evaluate when they would have the work completed. And then also included as part of the advertisement to bid, just so you are aware, if the bids come in and they are not favorable, you guys have the choice to, you have the right to reject any or all the bids. That's written in two different spots, it's on the advertisement for bid. And so should the bids come in over your asking, over, over a price, then you can reject all of them and forego the project. So that, that's kind of a summary of the bid, now item number three, bid submission and opening. After that, we open the bids, we will take them back and evaluate them, we'll go through them and make sure that they, that they fill out everything, that they provide the bid bond, the insurance, bid security. Is the contractor that's doing the work responsible for doing the work, or have they, have they done this type of work before? This is a post-tension concrete slab, so we'll want to make sure that contractor doing that work has done that type of specialty construction before. We do have some requirements on that, because pickleball courts are a little finicky, but there are numerous contractors around this area that have done them for both LPS and surrounding communities that I'm not, I'm not really worried about that. And then look at their price to make sure their price is reasonable and within, within budget. So once we do that, I will write a recommendation letter to Kelly for you to, you know, we would go with X responsible bidder. We'll, I'll come back to council and go through the bids with all of you, show them what, who bid the project, what we found, what we, and then make a recommendation from there, then you all would make a recommendation to, to award the contract to X contractor to do the work. And then at that same meeting, I would probably have the A one-on-one owner contractor agreement ready, so that you could sign after the meeting to get the work started by November first. And then we would kick off the project after that, then it's kind of, then our, our role as, my role changes from being the designer of it to the liaison for you guys as the owner's rep to make sure that the contract and the project is built per the plans and specifications. So I kind of take on that role, but you're still part of that whole process, and we have what are called owner, O A C meetings, owner, architect, contractor, and we go through every two weeks or weeks. I, I don't see this project being more than a six, seven month project, usually we meet every couple of weeks to go through there. The contractor will submit after they are awarded a schedule of values, and that's on the last page, this is an example, a project in Valley, Nebraska where we did pickleball courts. So then they will list out all of the items that you will be able to see. This will be part of their pay app that I'll review, so they'll submit me a pay application and a schedule of values, and this one you can see there, they have a percentage of it complete, so we, we follow that with the work that's being done on the site. Usually I visit the site before I sign the pay app, and then I give that to you guys for approval. And then we'll go through that process for six to seven months on the project. So tonight, really looking for advertisement for bid approval, we'll bid that for three weeks, we'll come back, be here on the sixteenth and open bids. And then I'll come to council on the twenty-second for approval and award of the contract if bids are favorable, and then we'll start construction. So the specification that's on the, on the screen, I don't, it's, it's pretty lengthy, it's got the advertisement for bid. This is, this just shows that the project will be bid publicly, talks about the project, where the bids can be obtained, where they can find those, how much the, how much it is, how much cost it is to, to gather the, the bids. And then, and then from there, there's the bid form for them to fill out. We'll be using the A I A documents for the project, so those are all, all the A I A contracts between the owner and the contractor, or any changes to the project. Pretty common for a project like this to just use A I A documents. The unit prices and alternates are listed out in there as well, if you want to read through them, we talk about what they are to try to define, to give the contractors a definition of what that is. And we'll have a, what, what's not in this document is we'll have a, a pre-bid meeting out on site with contractors on a specific day, at a specific time, that they can come out, ask me questions, ask questions to Kelly or any of the city staff that might be there. Utilities is usually likes to be there for those, and allows them to check out the site, we need to get that added to the, to the document, but I was going to coordinate with that with you later this week or tomorrow. And then the back is also kind of an updated cost estimate that we put together this afternoon, just outlining where we are with the bid on terms of prices that we've seen, and then alternates as well underneath there. So we're, we're right under the six fifty is where, I'm hoping we're around six hundred, six twenty, cross my fingers. But this is kind of the, the current estimate of where we had everything this afternoon.
That's a total estimate of the project?
This is a total estimate of what's in the, in the plans and specifications, yeah, yeah. So the spec book will accompany the drawings, if you want to go to the drawings. We've got, this is just a cover sheet here. We can go to the, this is the, yeah, that was the survey that's on there. This is the layout, current layout, showing the tennis court, three pickleball courts, the sidewalk, this is the multipurpose, excuse me, grass field, we just kind of wanted to identify where that was on there. This is an alternate, the sidewalk that comes down, this is an alternate as well, we've got parking along the street, two ADA stalls on there as well. So if we do want to include additional parking, we can, we can start to work our way up the street here as well. The next sheet just shows the, it will be an enlargement of this to detail out the dimensions of the tennis and pickleball, this is actually done, this was submitted, as I said, last week, so some of this stuff is a little, little dated. This is the grading plan for the project, right now it's balanced, so we had about twenty-five hundred yards of soil, we actually brought that number down a little bit further than we had before. So we're, we're completely balanced on site, so we shouldn't have to buy or haul off any dirt on the site. This erosion control plan, we'll need to submit this to the state of Nebraska for an erosion control permit, we'll do that as part of the project, and the contractor will just follow the rules for settlement, erosion control, again, erosion control details and notes for them. This is the utility plan, we'll have a water line that comes in here, we did show the sanitary sewer, but I think we were, we talked about taking that off, because that can be installed at a later date, and it's on the west side of the road, and can be a part of the shelter restroom concession, or started the restroom area, so we just, we're going to take the sanitary sewer line off of there for now, and just have a water line in there for the irrigation system. Some of the site details for pavement, signage, conjoining, these are the pickleball and tennis court nets and post tensioning details for the contract. For the contractor to follow, this was the landscape plan, we will make the trees a alternate bid item as I mentioned. And then seating for the rest of the park will be part of the base bid. Let's see, which one is this one? Scroll, scroll down a little.
Side irrigation.
Oh, the side irrigation plan, yeah, we were gonna, this one is, it, yeah, we'll have a meter, we'll have a backflow and meter over here and then we'll have a looped line go around with. Quick couplers, that one was being worked on this morning, now it's almost done, so we'll have. Potable water out there, so the even water and established turf and grass out there, so it's not just, there's no water out there. These get into electrical sheets here, so the next sheet here shows, shows, yeah, if I wanna scroll down. We've got lights for the, the playground is an alternate, lights for the pickleball is an alternate. And lights for the tennis court is an alternate, base bid will include the lights along the trail, so those are in the project, so they're, that will be illuminated at all times through there. We will plan to set the transformer somewhere in this general vicinity. Cause we'll need one for for all of this, this piece and it'll be on a Unistrack rack for the controls of the, of the lighting, the lighting will have. A timer switch on it, so if you're out there, you can turn it on and then it shuts automatically off at whatever time you would like. So nine thirty, ten o'clock, or if you go out there to play, you can turn it on and then it only is on for like, say, an hour. But it will not turn on past the time that it's dedicated to be shut down. I think that was the last page. Some deep lighting details, this would be the pedestrian light and then we have a a simple light pole detail for the court lighting themselves. Any questions I can answer tonight? Okay.
Questions or comments?
We have playgrounds lining, we're not doing playground equipment quite yet.
Not, not yet, yeah, we're we're just holding off on on that piece, equipment can be.
Added.
As much as the park itself, if you really wanna, cause they get pretty expensive, so.
Okay.
We've dedicated, this is roughly about sixty-five hundred square feet within this, this shape that we can add. We've we've programmed it so you could do larger quit, larger or smaller kid equipment in the, in the bottom area and and. Kinda some smaller pre-K stuff in the top to separate those two, is what our thoughts were.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? So tonight we're just looking for a motion to approval to go up to bids.
Correct, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the Terrace View Park recreational pickleball, pickleball courts ninety percent design and bid speci- specifications to go off the bid.
Right, motion was made by Mr. Borcard, second by Mr. Juhodah. For the approval of Terrace View Park recreational pickleball courts ninety percent design and bid specifications and send them out for bidding process. Any other discussion? Michelle, if you call a roll, please.
Nora.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeeman.
Yes.
Juhodah.
Yes.
Colwick.
Yes.
Borker.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash fifteen, mechanical amusement device tax.
So this resolution was prepared for you, just to give the. City guidance of what to do with this new revenue that is available to us per Nebraska statute seven seven three zero one two. And that's the mechanical amusement device tax act, which is, which is a distribution of taxes levied upon the net operating revenue of all cash. Devices operating within the state of Nebraska for proper profit gain, either directly or indirectly received. You see these types of machines at local restaurants, convenience stores, we do have a few in town. We don't know how much cash this would generate for the city. We're speculating it'll be very miniscule to start out with, but as the city grows and maybe this type of mechanical amusement devices grows also, there could be more. But for now, the state statute states, I'll just read that bottom portion there, that if the cash device is located within this limits of a city or village in such county, which we are. That one half of the remaining twenty-five percent should be distributed to the county and one half of the remaining twenty-five percent shall be distributed to the city. In which the device is located, so the the owners and operators of these devices have to report it to the state and then the state then gives. The county and the city that twelve and a half percentage. So basically, we're asking to be resolved that these funds received by the city of Hickman would be utilized in a similar purpose as Keno revenues. And as you know, Keno revenues, that was a ballot passed revenue source by your citizens, so we'd like to treat these types of gaming. Amusement devices in the same manner by using the funds for community betterment, which is very similar to the Keno revenues.
Does that affect the bar used up?
Yes, sir.
So this is already a state statute, we're just approving this to get the money?
Um, you're just basically approving what we're gonna do with the money.
Okay.
We receive it by state statute automatically, so there is no approval necessary there, but the res- the resolution is worded so. That we're telling our citizens how we're gonna utilize that new revenue stream.
Did you say how long till we collect it?
Quarterly.
Any other questions for Kelly?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance, or excuse me, resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifteen.
Second. Right, motion was made by Mr. Borcard, second by Mr. Wagner, to approve resolution two thousand twenty-five dash fifteen, uh, mechanical amusement device tax. Any more discussion? Michelle, if you call a roll, please.
Nora.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeeman.
Yes.
Juhodah.
Yes.
Colwick.
Yes.
Borker.
Yes.
Alright, so Tennessee, approval of construction contract with Van Kirk Brothers contracting for the Hickman booster pump station.
Okay, um, it was August twenty-sixth where you guys did approve Van Kirk Brothers contracting to award this project to. For the Nebraska booster pump station, the booster pump station for the city of Hickman, and I just wanted to scroll down a couple pages here and get to. Liquidated damages, so if the project doesn't go in such a manner that it goes to substantial completion, those damages are fifteen hundred dollars for each day. That expires after that substantial completion date, and then after substantial completion, it would go down to a thousand dollars a day, past that final completion. Otherwise, it's your standard project contractual language. With signatures and our contractor's already signed on, bringing all the insurance and bonding is available and within the document as well, so we're just looking for your. Approval to go ahead and sign the notice to proceed award for this contractor. And this contract that goes along with it.
Has a, has a booster station been ordered or is that waiting for us to?
Yeah, so at our last, well, I guess it was two minutes ago, on September ninth, we did have an email from Owen that he had asked them for an update, a couple weeks ago. They do not anticipate getting the pump station on site until spring after it's fabricated, and then they'll bring it to the site. So they've indicated this, they will most likely start construction closer to when they obtain the pump station, so they'll apply, they will plan to start work in the early spring. Unless it's a mild winter, then they can get started earlier, but we don't have that schedule yet, we haven't had the construction meeting for this project yet, but when we receive that schedule, we will be sharing that with you.
Alright, any questions or requests for? They're not gonna start anything until spring?
Well, they're ordering things right now.
The pump station will be built inside, so.
Will be what?
Built inside and it'll come in, it'll come on a trailer.
So they can everything done by July?
That's the goal, okay.
It's on them. Make a motion to approve the construction contract with Van Kirk Brothers contracting for Hickman booster pump station.
Second. Motion was made by Mr. Borcard, second by Mr. Wagner, to, for the approval of the construction contract with Van Kirk Brothers contracting. For the Hickman booster pump station, any more discussion? Michelle, if you call a roll, please.
Do we wanna add approval, notice to proceed?
Yes, please, friendly amendment to amend the motion to include the notice to proceed, as we're signing that document as well.
True. Is there a few, Doug?
Yeah.
Alright.
Thank you.
And you got that addendum up there? Alright, any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Nora.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeeman.
Yes.
Juhodah.
Yes.
Colwick.
Yes.
Borker.
Yes.
Alright, item ten D, consideration of NextLink access and lease agreement for water tower usage.
Okay, um, so this is our, I believe, second agreement or first renewal with NextLink. With our franchise agreement that was initially with Infinity Eight, then they changed companies, they were bought out and now they're NextLink, so. This is another renewal with NextLink for the access to the water tower and lease lease agreement for their antenna on top of our water tower. And the rent in consideration of this agreement is, they are supplying the city with multiple service connections for the life of this agreement. The agreement is for sixty months or five years. And NextLink currently provides a public internet service for us in the current building we're in, our public workshops, both of those, and also our public parks.
Hello?
Yes.
I would request a text edit to change the choice of lock and venue paragraphs to be from Texas to Nebraska.
Yes, thank you.
Eight, nine.
Yes.
No, no.
No, that's fine, yes, I understand that, is it possible that the council members can make that amendment request in their motion and I'll get that taken care of administratively?
No.
Thank you.
When, so they're running the antenna up this tower, correct?
No, it's on top of the tower.
Top of the tower? Okay, so they're running cable up. Is it just an antenna?
They are, they're on the tower already.
There, and they've been on there for several years.
So it's just kind of, this is a renewal, right?
We're renewing the lease agreement.
Okay.
There have been, there have been any updates other than the, gonna be the text edit?
Nope, there has not been.
Wade, do you have any trouble with these guys and adding stuff and, uh?
No, they usually.
Working on the tower?
No, they usually are pretty good at telling us that they're gonna come and do some updates on their stuff and.
And if they wanna add something like a, another antenna, do they talk to you and show you, cause those railings up there were not made for?
I don't think they've ever added anything, it's just, it's just updating more software type stuff, getting into their cabinets.
They added a cabinet down below, probably.
Yes. Yeah, I I think they've only been up the tower maybe once or twice since I've been here.
I think that's pretty, those cable companies, cell companies are pretty good at going in and doing their own little thing without giving any. Permission, so I think we need to keep a watch on that.
Yeah, well, we do have, we have a lock on our ladder up above, so that the ladder goes up.
They have to request access.
Yeah.
From our staff.
You mean from the ground to?
Yeah, so that that ladder goes up and it's padlocked, so.
They make extension ladders too for that. And you think the rent isn't up?
Yep, that was, and that's actually kind of repetitive in a portion of the franchise agreement we have with them.
So we're getting the benefit, you feel like we're getting the benefit?
Yes, yes, and they, and we have like direct line cellphone communications, if we have any downed internet. They have come to city hall and fixed things quite rapidly, so.
Wade?
Is there any way we could request to have direct fiber or whatever into our offices instead of the little, what do you call it, antennas?
I can look into it.
Just something to look into, I mean, it was pretty slow.
Any other questions or comments? Or take a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve consideration of NextLink access and lease agreement for water tower with the text edit for number eight and number nine. Do I need to say the text edit?
Uh, removing Texas and inserting Nebraska.
Second.
Alright, motion was made by Mr., by Ms. Zeeman, and second by Mr. Borcard. To approve the consideration of NextLink access and lease agreement for the water tower with text edits in paragraph eight and nine. From the state of Texas to the state of Nebraska. Is there any other discussion? Michelle, if you call a roll, please.
Nora.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeeman.
Yes.
Juhodah.
Yes.
Colwick.
Yes.
Borker.
Yes.
Alright, item ten E, Scotts Creek Trail, change order number one for change in concrete thickness with the increase of seven thousand nine hundred ninety-two and fifty cents.
So this is the change order that was briefly discussed at our last city council meeting, that I told you we're gonna bring forward, so at the request of city staff. We would like the concrete depth to be changed from five inch on the project that was bid to six inches. And so that is what this change order is for, and it seems that our engineer recommends that based upon the total square yards of payment. Being one thousand three hundred ninety, the additional cost is seven thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents to change from five inch to six inch concrete. Our engineer, our project engineer has said that it's, he recommends it as a reasonable cost and based on the conversations that we have had, he would definitely recommend this change. Again, a reminder, this trail is on our sewer utility easement, there are some manholes there, that large equipment will be going on, so staff recommends the thicker concrete. And then all of our other trails in Hickman are also six inch concrete, so we'd like to continue forward with that pattern.
So this makes sense to me, and actually the price sounds really good too, the, one thing. With, with us having those additional signs, if we do wanna make that switch and have electronic, it's about fifty-six hundred bucks within the original bid of the signs that they've ordered. Which would offset some of this, which would be good. So that, would that just be a change order, would that be a request?
It'll be a change order in a negative manner.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, but that's something we can contact them about and have that prepared.
Yeah, right.
Was this just an oversight or did, you know?
Not necessarily, um, when they do trail projects, five inches is standard.
Okay.
Um, but like I had said in Hickman, our trails are six inch concrete and the location of this one, being near those sewer manholes, we do know there will be some heavier equipment on it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve Scotts Creek tree, trail change order number one for change in concrete thi- thickness increase seven thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Norm, second by Ms. Zeeman, to, for the approval of Scotts Creek Trail change order number one. For change in concrete thickness and with the increase of seven thousand nine hundred ninety-two and fifty cents. Any other discussion? Michelle, if you call a roll, please.
Nora.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeeman.
Yes.
Juhodah.
Yes.
Colwick.
Yes.
Borker.
Yes.
Alright, and item ten F is the discussion of Midwest armor coating patch and armor coating project on Hickman Road.
Okay, um, is everyone who drives or. Okay, um is everyone who drives or walks in Hickman, you are well aware of the unpleasant looking patch of road from the roundabout west to almost autumn road. And this contractor has not fulfilled the description of what was described in this quote that we accepted and paid a deposit for. Um the city has not paid this bill in full yet. We've only put the deposit down of eighty-seven fifty. Um the communication from the contractor hasn't been the best. Um there's been several equipment failures. Um the ability to get the asphalt and the gravel to do the um armor coating has not been available for this contractor and there it's just been one thing after another. And I just remind you, this was supposed to be done in August. We requested it be done before school started. They still haven't finished it. Um we are entering near October one right now and I think it's time you guys took some steps to do something about this officially.
So who is the original contractor?
Midwest Armor Coating. This is who was hired to do that job.
Were were we using them for previous stuff in the city?
No, we weren't. There was a related company, a family relation of the company that we had been using for some items. Um this was a branch off. Um there were a couple of good verbal referrals that had come from a couple other communities, so we thought we'd try them. Sometimes this doesn't always work out.
Were they were they you on the crack filling?
So the uh.
Yes.
This company? So they've worked for us for years?
Yes. Nope.
The other company that these were?
There was a family relationship there, two different companies.
Yeah.
So the new site operator, whatever you wanna call him, said it was gonna be done last Friday. That didn't happen to him?
It did not happen. Nope, they told us it was gonna happen and it didn't. Yep.
Truck got there. He parked the truck there.
And then we have our K two construction for Scotts Creek Trail Trail mobilizing this week and they left their equipment unattended and abandoned there. So they were asked to move it. They had some of it moved. We gave them a different location in Hickman of which to put it, but it has left the town. So we don't know if they're coming back. They haven't communicated with us.
So no way to get our deposit back?
I'm not for sure about that. I think that's something you guys should discuss with your city attorney.
I was gonna mean my next question is before any other moves on here, do we wanna go into
Hold on.
Exactly, close session session to talk about whatever actions can I mean, can't take actions obviously, but.
Sure can or you can. At this point in time, you can just direct me to uh at least try to reach out to these folks and see what their what their reasons are for the delay. So we sure can go into close session. I think you can just give me that direction right now. Um I can come back and I can provide a report by the next meeting as to to have heard from them if there's been any progress. I would encourage the city to uh reach out to another contractor to do this work. We we do have a duty to mitigate our damages. We can't just sit on our hands and do nothing. Uh so and and I don't know, we don't have much contract to go off of. We've gotta quote and you know, if there were promises made, but they have it's done by an expired time and you haven't fulfilled those. At some point in time, you've gotta probably move on from these folks. Hire somebody else to do it.
One of my questions was if that's what we're gonna do, which doesn't sound bad, is there, do we have to go through? I don't remember how we did this, that we just, do we get multiple quotes and we just kind of went with?
Yes, right now your staff is getting some quotes from some other paving companies. The availability is what's very challenging right now 'cause all of the um persons that do this sort of thing. The other challenge we have found um with the your staff's communications with other companies, what's been done to Hickman Road potentially damaged it more so than what it was before. So right now we're we're looking at a we're looking at a mill and overlay situation now, which is going to be more expensive than this quote of thirty-five dollars. It will be double this much. However, there are there is a contractor that can come mill it one week but they can't come back until a week later to then do the overlay to smooth it out. And it will be asphalt and it will not be this armor coating with gravel and it'll be a much better repair. It'll be like three hundred percent better versus just patched. Um I
Short cost.
It will be a dupla- it'll probably double the cost of this. But we can present those quotes to you at the next city council meeting when the city attorney has his opinion as well and then you guys can make that decision.
I guess there's a couple things that that I'm thinking through too is and you probably don't know the answer to this since we're just talking about it now, but have we done enough due diligence in trying to get a hold of them? And are we delaying Scotts Creek further by trying to do more due diligence, getting a hold of them? And then there's also the delay, even if we decide to move on, like gravel's sitting there. Is it now in the way of the other project where we can't get someone in? I'm just trying to think through all this.
Not necessarily. I don't think the two projects are gonna hold each other up in any way and Scotts Creek Trail um depending on when they get this done and when they could come in and do this, contractors work together fairly easily. Um but with Scotts Creek Trail, they're starting um at Hickman Road and then moving towards the north. So depending on and and they're gonna move pretty quickly. I mean, they could be in and out of that intersection before we even get a paver here to mill and overlay this. So I don't foresee any potential conflict in slowing Scotts Creek Trail project down at all. And if there is some sort of conflict, I think we could probably do something to schedule better.
And we can be doing multiple things at once, like you guys are getting the clothes.
Mm-hmm.
Directly.
Well, and there's a thirteen day um mo- there's a thirteen day period in Scotts Creek Trail where they have to close down both sides of Hickman Road. That might be the best time for this company or another asphalt company to come in and fix that.
Right.
'Cause it'll be closed down for both projects and we can work together that way.
Right.
Question. K two do this stuff? They're here.
No. They do not.
They don't.
Nope, it's a different type of it's working with asphalt, not concrete.
Just question. Well, I did not. If they did, then you know.
They're sitting here. You got one roadway?
They don't.
Yep.
And how many more companies do you think you can get?
I don't know. The big thing is the availability and and the armor coating, this is really the only company that the one that we tried here was really the only company that actually does armor coating other than the state or big companies that do highways. So that's why you about gotta step up to the mill and mill and overlay. Um this company is busy as well. If we just said, hey, we wanted to get on the list, we're talking like next April. But they shot me a price, two different prices. One price, they'd have it done by the end of October, which might coincide with when they wanna shut that street down or they can have it done in a week, obviously for more money. 'Cause they'd have to shift some other things around.
So you did find somebody.
What's that?
You did find somebody else.
I found one. I've only talked to one person. I can buy but I can get try to get some more quotes. And they are pretty close to the original quote when we did this versus an old mill and overlay earlier on. Um I think it was like eighty-five thousand for the mill and overlay, but then when you throw in um the incidentals, it was more like a hundred and nine thousand and that's that's way more than what they're quoting us for this.
Who was that with, do you remember?
Which one, the first one?
Yeah.
Cathers.
So Wade, if if we wait until April, is the price different? Or?
Yeah, well, yeah, because it's.
Okay. So my other question is, is it something that needs to be done ASAP?
Well, it probably should have been done a year or two ago.
Well, I'm wondering.
I know, but I mean it's.
You're gonna put up with this?
You're gonna have snow piles going over that.
Yeah, it's It's gonna break up even worse because of the snow and the ice and the freezing and the thawing because of the cracks and.
You'll see more of that alligator fragmentation and the asphalt coming off on the sides of the road, which could further damage our right of way areas.
Yeah. Right. And doing doing what what they're proposing to do is ultimately what needed to be done. We just thought we could have a Band-Aid for five to eight years to before the state possibly came in with the other road, but this is what needs ultimately would need to be done.
I would say I would, even if they were, and I know you're gonna try and get some other quotes, but even if they were the only ones that could coincide with this timeline, getting more quotes would at least let us know that they're in the ballpark and they're not gouging us, but if they're the only ones like.
Right, but when they're they they flat told me this isn't gonna be cheap because you're wanting me to basically push everybody else back and possibly upsetting some other clients to drop everything and come here, which I understand.
It would be interesting to see if, I think Kelly's right, if if they were able to coincide the two projects, that would be
Well, if you went with the with the the first quote that they had, they said they'd have it done by the end of October, which I think Scotts Creek is it's basically for the month of October is what that.
There's thirteen days in October that Hickman Road will be closed.
Well, yeah, close. Right.
Yeah, so that would be.
Definitely worth exploring.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess do we need to?
Give the city attorney direction?
Think you need a motion to give him.
So Midwest just kinda ghosted us, like you can't even get contact and they give return calls and okay, yeah.
Well, maybe.
Wade's public works cell phone appeared to have been blocked.
Oh, okay, so well.
I do.
Because when I called from a different phone, they answered.
Well, and that's what I mean. I do feel like there is a difference in like e- even though there shouldn't be, our city administrator calling versus the city attorney calling, that's a different level of escalation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that might move something.
Absolutely.
But do we want them?
We don't want them now.
No, we don't want them, but but at the same time.
Something has to be done.
Right.
I mean, we had a you had a conversation with them a week ago, they told you.
I've had a conversation with them.
They reported that their new site director was gonna have it done Friday.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
There was no contract uh on this, right? Like a non-refundable deposit or something that fell out?
No, when you when you sign their quote and you accept the quote, that's, yep.
That's basically it, okay. So we might not be able to even get that back.
Well, I think the city attorney does.
Unless you say. Yeah.
So I guess is that the direction that you're asking for, Kelly, is not just to contact them, but really it sounds like, if I'm wrong, what, no, but
Yeah.
we're determining now that we're moving on, so the direction that the city attorney will be.
Like refund of our.
Right, make contact. Get what we can get back.
Refund our deposit.
And move on, yeah.
And Wade, you said the next meeting, you you would have possibly additional quotes on it?
We will have them ready for you.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we wait two weeks?
I don't know. This this guy asked me if I could let him know tonight when the meeting was over so he gets to schedule questions.
Yeah, I'm gonna start scheduling.
May I make a recommendation?
Yeah.
Uh what if the city councilor were to give the uh mayor authority um to negotiate, 'cause within our purchasing policy, as long as we report it back to you and everybody's aware of the situation, um if the mayor could approve, if if it's it's a timeliness thing, if this contractor's available.
To get it done October.
But it's gonna be above that.
Well, it'll be above the fifty thousand.
Yeah, so the to be at the end of end of October, they they quoted me sixty-five. By the end of next week, eighty-five.
And honestly, Kelly, that's kind of what I was thinking is if we if we were to give two directions, basically one to Kelly for for doing that piece, then the other, give the mayor authority to enter an agreement no higher than whatever amount.
Yeah, maybe put a va- a value out there knowing that we're gonna.
And stipulating that it's that it's within that timeframe.
As high as we can.
That was a verbal quote, Wade?
Yeah.
Of sixty-five.
And yeah, and he'll and he'll put it in writing. It's just that this is all done.
Yeah, just so we all know though, that's a verbal quote.
Yes, so yeah, and I can get it in writing. Yeah, it's no problem with that writing. That was just a.
That's, I mean the. Yeah.
That was disappointing that this happened, but.
It's time to move on.
Yeah, we can actually move on and and not let that sit over the winter, 'cause it's gonna be even worse.
No, and that's it's a good, actually it's a good point, Kelly, just having a contract is probably gonna help with this in the future. And you're right, it's it's two weeks.
So we're you just wanna direct Kelly to end this and?
And then bring.
Uh bring forth a
Bring it's a contract, right.
And try to work on.
Bids and contract, a quick contract of what
The next meeting.
with the new company, as long as it's under X amount of dollars.
To the next to the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
And and he did mention too that if we if we wanted to fix anything with those two humps going to the north that he would be willing to, while he's here with his equipment, he would be willing to try to level those out too. But that's that's a different thing, so.
I guess with us with us not.
Let's stick to topic you're waiting.
Yeah.
With us not directing with doing that, I guess we're not directing purchasing, so there's no motion that either that that would be needed. It's just your direction.
Wade, did he, did he give you like a timeline when he could have this? He said at the end of October?
By the end of October for the for the sixty-five thousand, by the end of next week for eighty-five thousand, yeah.
By the end of October.
Do we have, how what about the budget on this?
Oh, we're entering a brand new budget season October one. We got lots of available numbers. I mean, the money comes in throughout the year, but.
Does Travis need to stay in motion that he we wanna try to get that deposit back with eight thousand seven hundred dollars?
I believe uh what's just giving direction to the city attorney and your city staff would be significant at this time.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to uh direct the city attorney to make contact with Midwest Armor Coating um and uh request a refund of our deposit and direct the city staff to um acquire bids uh to bring to the next city council meeting.
Second.
Alright, motion was made by Mister Borkard, second by Miss Zeeman to uh give direction for the city attorney to contact Midwest Armor Coating on the patching armor coating project and for refund of the deposit and give direct staff to get motions or estimates before the next city council meeting.
Okay.
Round this.
Yes.
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Any, I would just say real quick uh to amend that to save bids. Is that is there a contractual agreement doing estimate and bid or does that matter? I just wanna make sure.
Well, if you got a bid, then you think you draw a quick contract or something.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I I don't know how long these quotes are good for.
Yeah, we'll call it, yeah.
Uh.
I will.
So we're yeah, wanna, we talked about that's two weeks. We're we're in October.
We wanted to give.
We're gonna give the the mayor and.
That your next meeting is not until October eighth and that mobilization of Hickman Road for Scotts Creek Trail is these days here.
That's when it's gonna be shut.
Well, what I'm getting at is we we don't have two weeks to wait to get whoever lined up to get this done by the end of October.
Yes, we're trying to schedule it with Scotts Creek Trail.
So do you are you okay with giving the mayor approval to approve the contractor within the next hopefully week?
I guess the question would be, 'cause our next meeting is at the eighth, is it the next week?
Yes. It's October eighth or we could call a special meeting.
Eighth.
But he's talking to the guys now. They can get it done by October if we don't tell until the third second week of October.
Yeah, it's the eighth.
Right, he has to do his scheduling. He has to start swatting things around probably tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, it's just gonna create more of an issue if we wait two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just.
We can start a meeting real quick and approve it.
Or we could just approve this immediately now.
We just need to do it now.
Well, that's costing us another three grand.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's just approve him.
Yeah, I'll I'll, can I just amend my motion?
To?
I'll just amend my motion to um still include the direction to the city attorney, but amend the motion to uh give the mayor authority to approve a contract up to seventy thousand or no higher than seventy thousand to complete the work as directed. Better sense?
It's not happening.
You got that, Michelle?
That's a lot to address.
Alright, everybody knows uh what Travis is amending to uh give the mayor the authority to approve this up to seventy thousand dollars. Any other discussion?
When will uh when will we know that this is?
I will notify you.
Okay.
Wade's calling him on the way home.
Thanks, I'll be home.
Alright, Michelle, if you call roll please.
Norm?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeeman?
Yes.
Johoda?
Yes.
Cole Wiki?
Yes.
Borkard?
Yes.
Alright, motion carried. Uh onto item eleven, city administration report.
I think we've just talked about everything we've been working on the last couple of weeks, so um now that the budget has been approved, um I will be getting those items submitted to um our state entities as required by the law. And that's all I have for you this evening.
So I have a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
With putting in our new crosswalk signs and signals of light, I don't know if we wanna do it now or we wanna wait until they're all put in, but I think we need to put in our newsletter on our website that cars do need to stop.
Quote the state statue.
Yes, because cars are used to not stopping because the pedestrians have stopped.
Mm-hmm.
And so now, even though you push the light, cars just continue to go by and you have to wait for them.
Let's see.
I'm sure it's gonna take some getting used to.
Yeah. Hopefully that lasts.
It's it's not a stop and go light though, so they don't legally. Uh deputy, can you answer a traffic violation question for us, please?
Is it? I mean, obviously uh pedestrians always have the right of way, but I'd have to look into that more because there isn't a s- it's not a stop light or a stop sign. Um obviously, if they're in the crosswalk already, they have to stop, but um yeah, I think it's important that much, you know?
Wade, is our stop sign, did we remove the stop sign on the north side of the road, but we s- we absolutely still have it on the south side? I know that for a fact.
I think the north side's on.
Didn't we remove the stop sign on the north side?
I'll look and see. I think so, though. I'll look and see.
Okay, I'm pretty sure.
Time for the for the history.
Yes.
Stop sign?
Yes, yes, for the pedestrian.
Right, so. So so you're looking both ways without a stop sign?
You're saying?
So, so you're looking both ways at a stop sign, you're saying the one, it, there, there might not be one on the south side?
The north side.
The north side.
There's not one on the north side, there is one on the south side.
That, yeah, that's those little tiny stop signs for the people on the pedestrians, so you're right.
Yes. So the lights are, the little lights are flashing.
Which should tell people.
But the cars are still going by, so I guess we've defeated the purpose to put them up if the cars are gonna continue to go by and we're gonna continue to stop.
I noticed when I went through there the other day, there was nobody around and that thing was going, so, how, how long is that?
It was flashing.
Yeah.
Is it random?
It, it's supposed to go for like thirty seconds.
Yeah, it was going, and I didn't even see anybody on any side of the trail, yeah, I was wondering about that.
So I'll check on those little small stop signs, cause that was a, uh, grant-funded project, um, in which those stop signs were put there at the time because we did not have lit crossings and that sort of thing, so, um, I'll have to check those grant requirements and when those grant requirements expire to see if we can or cannot take those little pedestrian stop sign down. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions for Kelly? Or take a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, no. I'll make a motion to approve the city administration report, sorry.
Second.
Motion was made by Miss Seaman, second by Mister Wagner, to approve the city administration's report, Michelle, if you call roll, please.
Norm?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeman?
Yes.
Johoda?
Yes.
Cole Wiki?
Yes.
Borker?
Yes.
All right, governing body comments and council correspondence, uh, see there's none listed, so we'll move to item thirteen. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion was made by Miss, by Mister Borkart to adjourn and second by Miss Seaman, Michelle, if you call roll, please.
Norm?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeman?
Yes.
Johoda?
Yes.
Cole Wiki?
Yes.
Borker?
Yes.
All right, meeting is adjourned.